The Council of Order, today is Monday, September 18, 2023. We start with the invocation from Central Church.
I would first just like to say thank you. Thank you for all of your work. I know behind the scenes of leadership is difficult, so thank you for all that you do for our community. Let's pray together. Father, thank you for this group. Thank you for the gifts and talents that are assembled here that you have brought together for such a time as this. So, Father, in this meeting this evening, grant them wisdom and peace, comfort, strength, discernment, as they discern together what is best for our community and those that reside here. God, thank you for this meeting and thank you for their work. Bless them in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thanks, Pastor. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Almond?
Here.
Burnett?
Here.
Calgery?
Here.
Comfort?
Here.
Drost?
Here.
Hermsen?
Here.
Ocean?
Here.
Okay. Next item up is the opportunity for community comments. This item is reserved to receive comments from the community for concerns whether or not they're included in the current agenda. Community is encouraged to speak before the mayor and city council, asked to keep statements brief, time limited to three minutes. Any questions are to be asked of the city staff, council members, or mayor prior to speaking to the full council, so concerns can be properly researched and perhaps answered away from the meeting. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and city council only. Is there anyone who wishes to speak tonight? Seeing a friendly wave and that was all, we'll move on. Now, let's see. Next up is the consent agenda. There were only a few items to point out on that. Item K is a resolution setting a public hearing for October 16th for leaving a special assessment on a nuisance abatement of 502 North Market. Items L and M are both resolutions setting public hearings for October 16th, leaving special assessments for 806 North Age, one abatement on May 11th and another on July 18th. Do we have a motion of support for the consent agenda?
Remove.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ocean?
Yes.
Almond?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Calgery?
Yes.
Comfort?
Yes.
Drost?
Yes.
Hermsen?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Getting into the regular agenda, item A is to consider a resolution approving the execution and entry into a 2080 agreement, this being with the Steven Memorial Animal Shelter. Alex, you got something to say?
I do. So, I just wanted to point out a few things that we had changed in the agreement or added. So, Steven Memorial Animal Shelter will now be responsible for picking up all deceased cats and dogs. So, it used to be Public Works Department would do that, so we have changed that. They aren't going to pick up wildlife, though, so we did talk about that a little bit, so we will still be doing that. We're acting on behalf of the city to write citations to deem animals dangerous at large. And Chief Ben on that as well. And then there was one more item, just the TNR program. So, the animal shelter and in the House County Humane Society will be working together to work on the TNR program for the city of Oskaloosa. So, does anybody have any questions on anything that was in there?
I have a question on something that's kind of on the outside of in there.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's probably not for you, it's for somebody else probably, but had somebody come to me a couple of weeks ago, they moved into a new house or a different house, and evidently they have a dog that barks incessantly, a neighborhood dog. And I mean, and I've heard it in the distance, so they live kind of in my neighborhood, but it's far enough away that you just kind of put up with it, right? But when it's like next to you, I guess it would become rather annoying.
Right.
And so, the question is, is there any remedy for that type of a situation?
Can I? That would fall... And I would second that too.
Is there a microphone for me on this?
That's, that would fall under nuisance and the police addresses those complaints.
So, we just call the cops on them?
What normally would happen is we'd call them on emergency number. The officers will respond, and if they can hear it, we'll either warn them or if it's a rookie customer, we tell them.
Well, just tell them to roll down their window, Ben, and they'll be able to hear it.
Usually what happens is we have to contact Dixon's office to handle the citation.
Yeah.
But it does fall under people somehow think leaving a dog outside all day long is, quote, "good for it," and it's not. And I've seen dogs about freezing to death and barking.
And I just want to point out also, I think you told me this, you can do that anonymously because I, we have trouble in our neighborhood. You do not have to give your name, correct?
For that, okay.
Because you're not going to be signing a complaint anywhere we are.
Yep. Okay. Well, because I think that makes people a little bit hesitant to call in.
And one question too. I had heard around the hospital, are there certain quiet zones as well? Is there a larger fine? I had heard there was a two-block quiet zone around the hospital.
Is it posted? I don't think it's posted, is it?
No, very likely.
It's probably for the people revving their motorcycles and such, that type of quiet zone.
Yeah, like Bob.
We appreciate it.
Well, they do call it a quiet zone for the ambulance, right?
It's a two-block, right?
Yeah, something like that, but yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Along the same lines with the barking dogs, Chief and I have had many conversations about that recently, haven't we, Chief?
Barking dogs?
The section, yeah.
Oh, okay.
3E, it says that the animal shelter shall respond to animal nuisance by animal cruelty, animal abuses. And so, when I read that, I thought of barking, and is your staff still going to respond to those, or does that, does this agreement shift that responsibility to the shelter?
So, I believe the way it's read, the shelter's staff will not come out in the middle of the night for barking dogs. We would still respond to those and either refer those to the shelter or deal with them ourselves. But it would also give the shelter employees the power to also do that.
And so, that was the other, the power or authority, the animal shelter, the animal control officer has the authority to issue citations now?
Correct.
Whereas they did not before, right?
True.
Okay. I think that's great.
And then if there is an appeal for maybe a dangerous dog, which we've had some recently, I actually hold that hearing, so me having to issue those is maybe a conflict, so having them issue them and have me hold the hearing, that goes without.
Good.
Actually, now I have a question since Bob pointed that out.
Is that in conflict with the shelter's mission? Because if there's certain animals, you know, aggressive animals, and you have to put them down, is this a no-kill shelter?
They do, if they have to.
If they have to, okay. Because some shelters are strictly...
They prefer not to.
Okay, yeah, of course, but sometimes, and that, so.
Question. If somebody gets a barking dog complaint, is the animal shelter, somebody wants to get tested, do they go to court and does the shelter in court have to do that also?
You guys can give if they are cited for a nuisance animal?
Yeah.
Yeah, they could talk to the legal department and file for a deal.
But given to court, will they have, will that being the animal shelter in court have to do that also?
If they were to be cited, yeah.
Just so they're aware of that, that animal shelter, just so they're aware that that could be something that they might have to do.
Question on feral cats, just because I thought somebody needs to ask some questions.
Well, cats need their own dew, too, right?
So, where are the feral cats at now?
They're all the way at the end of where we wanted them. I don't even know how to explain it. Matt would be better at telling. They're, yeah, they're clear at the end.
They're south of Shelter C, where the bulk was property, was after that one property.
Okay.
So, because originally they said they wouldn't, cats wouldn't move, but they didn't move.
Well, what we were trying to do is they were trying to move them in stadia. So, they moved them once, and then they moved them again, and now they're all the way at the end, and they all seem to be there.
For a can of tuna, they'll do a lot.
Yeah.
So, in G, part four, it says that the animal shelter could seek cooperation of private citizens with the TNR program by asking them to withhold feeding the animals for 24 hours prior to the trapping. So, this implies that we know that there's feeding going on and that's okay.
So, it's only supposed to be the certain group of people that have worked with the animal shelter and who were here a few months ago talking to us. Those are the only people who are supposed to be feeding the cats, and they're working with the animal shelter on times and how and all of that stuff.
Okay.
But they are all trapped and vaccinated.
Okay.
So, that was my next question, the vaccination, those rabies.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay. We got a motion of support? Did we? No, I'm asking.
Second.
Okay.
Now you do.
Anybody want to discuss it?
No, I just want to remind her.
Roll call, please.
Almond?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Calgery?
Yeah.
Comfort?
Yes.
Drost?
Yes.
Hermsen?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Okay, that passes, and Joe, I interrupted you.
Yeah, that's okay. Just a reminder, and I know you all know, when you reissue this, you have to get new signatures.
Yeah.
Because this is not the correct copy in here.
Yeah, Shane has signature on it.
Okay, and dated and everything?
I thought you sent out a, didn't you send out something?
Yeah, we have to wait, yeah. I'll try to get the mayor's signature.
Yeah. Okay. Moving on. Item B is to consider a resolution approving the execution and entry into a legal services agreement with Heslinga Dixon and Heig. For a number of years, the firm has acted as city attorney for the city of Oskaloosa pursuant to an agreement. Pursuant to the bifurcation agreement previously entered into, city criminal prosecutions were handled by attorney Misty White. White has now been appointed as a magistrate and thus resigned her position. Heslinga Dixon and Heig will resume the handling of criminal prosecutions for the city and a new services agreement reflecting the agreement between the parties needs to be entered into. Do you have a motion of support for this?
Remove.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Burnett?
Yes.
Calgery?
Yes.
Comfort?
Abstain.
Drost?
Yes.
Hermsen?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Almond?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. It's just item C. And this has to do with the 2023 executive summary. Lamal? Are you presenting?
Yes, your honor. We work together as a big team, so we plan together, we get to execution, so, and then we report back to make sure we're all on the same page. And also, it's all, it's nice as we hit milestones to look back and see how far we've come. It builds confidence, and I think it fuels energy. So, fiscal year, wrapping up the fiscal year 2023 was a milestone. So, and, just a second. So, the fiscal year 23 is the period starting July 1st of 2022 extending to June 30th of '23. Just a second, go back. So, we started the fiscal year quarter one, started the strategic planning process, we completed the development of the strategic plan, and why we did this, the strategic plan is a way for us to organize initiatives and all projects. We had a lot underway. It's just a way of us focusing on priorities to make sure we're delegating the resources to advance those priorities. What was significant with the strategic plan process was the involvement we had with the community. So, we did three sessions, one with the staff, and then we did a session where we included stakeholders and community partners, and then we did a session with the city council. It was a very successful process, and then after that, if you can advance, we have the plan adopted by the city council. And in the plan, it's a three-year plan. In the plan, our vision for the community was to be welcoming and attractive, a place where everyone is engaged in a rich collaborative environment, where everyone has the opportunity to thrive, and where growth is supported, innovation and creativity are celebrated, where governments are efficient, effective, and collaborative. So, right after the development of the plan, the staff got into putting together the annual work plan. The annual work plan is our plan of action, the organized plan of action, so includes everything we do throughout the year, meaning it's going to include strategic priorities and also include enduring functions. Where are those? Those are items we do to keep the lights on. So, that would be, for example, putting together a budget, making sure we're putting together reports to stay in compliance with the different regulations and grants we have, and fighting fires, and this basic stuff that we do on a day-to-day. So, and then we organized this plan, and we did the alignment with the strategic plan, making sure we're focusing, we're giving enough focus to advancing the strategic priorities, and also making sure we have the long-range plan, making sure we're advancing long-range strategies. So, just as a reminder, the focus areas, the four priority areas in the strategic plan are vibrant community, and to be collaborative, efficient, effective government, and to be a safer community and to be a thriving community. So, the annual report is going to be, as we report on the annual plan, would be like a snapshot in time on the day that we completed the fiscal year. So, just reporting on that, next slide. You can see here you have two charts. The one on the left is basically that snapshot in time, looking at the completed items, how they're broken down by priority area or whether they are enduring, considered enduring function. So, if you look at it, we spend 30% of our time or resources, or 30% of the completed items, on day-to-day basic items. That means the rest is considered strategic in nature or aligned with the strategic plan or advancing the strategic plan. That's two-thirds of the completed items. I think that's progress. It looks great. Just looking at this one, I have confidence in us getting in a reasonable timeframe, getting closer to realizing the vision in the strategic plan. The chart on the right is just looking at those completed items that are strategic in nature or aligned with the strategic plan. Broken down by the focus area, you can see majority of the items here are, can be, under the thriving community focus area. And under collaborative, effective, efficient government, that also makes sense because we spend, it's a base year for us, and we spend a lot of time and effort on basic infrastructure items, and also just setting up, because thriving community is about setting us for that future. So, it makes sense. When I look at it, I think we did great, we made a lot of progress. This is just the overall, if you can advance. So, let's, let's hit the highlights of that fiscal year. As a reminder, the vibrant community vision was for us to invest in placemaking, investing in physical and social environment that fosters pride and facilitate quality of life. That's the vision we had. First item I want to highlight is completing the Charles Stop Alley project. Why is it significant? What we did as a city, we amended our code to allow the development of that. It's important because it's preserving history, it's creating a landmark, it's adding space for event space, adding something in the downtown area. So, number two...
Add something to that you could have put in there? It's a collaboration between government and private folks in the community, right?
True. Yeah, it can be aligned under collaborative community. A lot of them, you can see, they check a couple of boxes. And then we, we were designated as a great place. So, why is it significant? Because it brings the attention, and I think that's part of the strategic planning goal is to us promote the community and focus on the downtown and all the arts and culture and amenities and offerings in the community. So, and then that will also give us the opportunity for funding and more investment in arts and culture. The library was a stakeholder in the application, and leadership supported that designation. Also, wanted to highlight the downtown facade. During the fiscal year, we were able to complete Phase Three of the facade project. So, we're all familiar with that project, is about maintaining, creating space, maintaining, preserving history, taking care of the buildings. It's about quality and the experience we're providing downtown, if you can advance. And then we improved Shelter D. We did a lot of improvements to, on the machinery, and then restoring the fireplace. Also, this is us taking care of infrastructure, taking care of amenities, so for people to enjoy. At the library, we added a 3D laser printer improvement to the makerspace lab. This is adding to the programming offering at the library and adding more, or to the diversity to the offerings at the library. And then we painted the library, also taking care of the space, now it's more inviting, and improvement to the library garden, adding the set of chairs, and also, I think that just looking at statistics, that program in the summer, so their highest numbers. Library of Things, this is a good highlight, us adding collection to what things you check out of the library. Baking sets, games, yard games, and why this is important, because it's about access. The library provide to the community, especially to those who have no access otherwise. And then the downtown pavement, I think we completed paving the downtown area, it's also about creating nice conditions downtown, taking care of the space. We added water filling stations in Edmondson Park. It's about encouraging healthy living, it's about quality of life, and we hired our first community services park director. Now we have someone whose sole focus is on quality of life.
Welcome, Steve.
Hey, wake up, wake up.
The vision we had on collaborative, efficient, and effective government, that we're efficient. We provide services at an optimized, at an optimized level, meaning we're maximizing basically on the resources. And we collaborate when we do that, we maximize benefits, we minimize costs. So, basically being smart and efficient. The highlight on that, we joined the Greater Des Moines Partnership and their collaborative community. It's a significant step for us because the Greater Des Moines, they market, they promote the whole region, and us being part of that, we're winning, and also, we have access to experts who are experts in economic development, and then us having a voice and being out there highlighting our name, being part of the religion. We also updated our wastewater code. This is part of our cost recovery model. We revisited what we had in the code in terms of enforcement, standards, to make sure we're in compliance with DNR standards, and also, we adjusted the fees on that to be equitable and also to be proactive ahead of the certified site development. We're getting ready for growth. Can we advance? We also updated our franchise fees agreement with everything going with inflation and everything, and everybody knows that franchise fees support our public safety programs. So, it makes sense to, for us to be able to sustain the quality of services we provide is to be financially sustainable in that. We updated our stormwater master plan. It's always nice to make sure our information and data is up to date. That plan assessed, assessed and identified needs and also recommended improvements for us to plan for. Basically, this is going to inform our CIP, and also recommended adjusting cost recovery model to make sure we're able to implement the plan. A superstar here on the list, us completing and adopting our Plan Oski comprehensive plan. This is our long-range plan, it's a 20-year timeframe, it's our, our vision, it's a long-term vision, and also, it's the guide and the framework for our policy, and it's the statement. It shows everybody in, from a development perspective, that this is how we will grow, this is how we, we want to grow. So, it's us investing in that future. So, it's a statement, it's a good thing, the fact that we have an updated plan, it says a lot about the community. Also, on the list, the development of system of an annual work plan. It's important for us to make sure we have a system that will hold everybody accountable and make sure, and be able to have a system that will allow us to manage our time, make sure we're advancing priorities. So, we completed that. And also, during the fiscal year, we transitioned fully to Office 365. It's important from a communication perspective, from an effectiveness perspective, and now we have a platform that, especially because we are operating from different sides. Now, we are able to collaborate through the platform anytime, and from data efficiency standpoint, now we have an efficient way to store data instead of emailing back and forth and driving and having to meet face-to-face, we can always meet through Teams. We also updated, in terms of recruitment and retention, we updated our vacation policy. Now, new hires will start with two weeks of vacation instead of one, so we wanted us to be competitive. And then, that's a superstar also, policy manual, Lexipool. We did a complete overhaul for, this is Police Department. Our policy manual because we want to stay relevant, we want to be up to date. It's a system that manages our policies, keep track of case law. This is from risk management perspective, that's top-notch, it's a big deal for us to celebrate. And then accreditation, our library were, was able to maintain accreditation, and it's the highest level in the state of Iowa. It's a big deal. It's a big deal and I wanted to make sure we're highlighting that. Uh, in terms of staff development, we've implemented, uh, MPO. Uh, MPO provide us a complete talent management, uh, system. We're excited, we, we, uh, during the fiscal year, we completed just the leadership part and started on the communication. So it's a highlight. Um, under safer community, uh, the vision for, for us is to have a community where everyone feels safe. And us being prepared and resilient. First highlight on that, we added a new canine, uh, we're excited about that. Um, so we added Rocky and also Duke won champion award. Big deal, highlighted. And then superstar EMT certification. Uh, remember this is a snapshot in time, so during the fiscal year, six members completed their EMT certification. It's a big deal because now this is an added value, uh, quality of service to the community now. Because a lot of times we're in there and unseen first. And, uh, if we're able to save one life, that's, that's a lot. So, but now, uh, the full team has the EMT certification. And, um, during the fiscal year also, we invested in body cams and in car cams. Uh, this is for, uh, our officers' safety, this is for accountability, is the best accountability system out there. It's for us managing risk, um, it's, it's a great investment. Rehab Unseen, that's another superstar, basically, um, as we respond to fire incidents. Now we have this protocol where we provide unit unseen that if we have a member who's gone through two, uh, oxygen tanks, they have to go to and visit with rehab. This is about safety, it's about wellness because the, those can be really stressful and taxing. Um, now we have this protocol, it's, uh, it's, it's a big deal, it's a big improvement. Also, uh, we retired during the fiscal year, we retired Engine 77. Well, we got a new engine, bumper truck. And, uh, us investing in the critical infrastructure. And highlighted there also us, we invested in a study where we assessed, uh, administration and operations as it relates to 911 service and EME operations. We still have recommendations to implement, but we completed that assessment during the fiscal year. Can see this, we have something at the bottom. Scroll along. I think the implementing the radio system. Uh, we completed the automated cloud backup. So that's also for disaster preparedness, disaster recovery. And also we implemented the, um, radio system. Now all the crews are able to, to have this top-notch communication, uh, during emergencies and also in case of a disaster, we're, we've got top-notch communication system. Under thriving community priority area, the vision was to, to be a growing community, grow tax base, infrastr- uh, invest in the infrastructure that facilitates growth. Uh, so we have strong industry, quality housing, abundant opportunities and of course financial sustainability if we have all of those. Uh, highlight under this priority area is the RISE grant we got for the Southeast Connector. So yeah, towards the fourth quarter, we heard the news about, uh, us, um, getting approved for the grant, uh, with Mahaska County and the city chambers in support of the project. Why this project is a big deal, it opens up acreage for development. Um, innovation park, well, also we got certified towards the end of the fiscal year. Also, this is a super, super, um, site, fifth largest in the state of Iowa. Uh, it's a big deal, uh, it says we're ready for big development. It's about, um, having that area ready for industrial development. And, um, all the amenities, uh, all the amenities that comes with that. Brown Fields Grant, also we got the check. Um, uh, it's, it's for, uh, investing in cleanup phase one, phase two. This is, why, why is this important? Because it's, it's allows, it allows us the opportunity to redevelop underutilized sites and have them ready for development. Uh, you see a lot of infill, um, happens because of the cleanup we did through this grant. And then we completed the housing needs assessment. Um, for us to be ready to market out the opportunities in, 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 in the community and also the needs for, for people interested in developing housing. Uh, also the study served or we needed the study to qualify for workforce housing to have developers be eligible for estate offered programs. We continue to encourage incentivized development, that's our, um, economic development policy. During the fiscal year, a couple of projects came to fruition. Uh, I'm sure council recall, uh, development agreement with, uh, CCI to develop the clean laundry building, adding value to the community, adding tax base. Also, we, um, invested in the food truck park. Uh, it adds diversity to what is available, uh, in a community, adding value to the community. And Pizza Hut also, it's about choice, uh, it's about adding diversity of what people can enjoy in the community. Uh, we have a program where we invest in improving our sanitary sewer, uh, collection system. Continue to invest in that, that's a long-term project. But during the fiscal year, you can see in the map highlighted areas, those are completed improvements. Uh, I want to highlight us addressing inflow and infiltration. So by reconstructing those, we are able to reclaim lost processing capacity. And we all know that we need this for growth. And then also continue to make, uh, investment in streets during the fiscal year. As you can see in the map, areas highlighted yellow are overlays or, or seal coat. And red shown here would be a combination of transportation projects. Uh, that would be patching, overlay, um, intersection, marking, those kind of projects. We continue to make investments on those and improve the driving conditions in the community. That's it. So yeah, those are the highlights. So we've done a lot, uh, not all attractive, but that's what we were able to accomplish during the fiscal year. Um, that happened without the team, uh, we have an awesome team. Appreciate everything they do every day.
Absolutely.
We continue as, as long as we have the commitment of the team, we continue to, um, make progress towards our vision.
Compliments to the entire team. Uh, it's real easy for folks to kind of break loose and say, hey, look at me and, and be the star of the show, that sort of thing. From the council's perspective, what we're seeing is coordination and team effort. Uh, where, uh, where it crosses departments, people are working together. And I just want to compliment the entire team on that, thank you very much for those efforts.
So this is your first full fiscal year here, correct?
True, it's my baseline year.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's what I was, that's, that's what I, that's what I, yeah, I, I'd go big eyes too, I'm thinking, you just raised the bar way too high, I'm just trying to figure out what you're going to do for the second year, I'm really interested to see that now, so.
Steph has a pretty good start on.
But the team, the team said, I mean, the team, you're right, I mean, it's a spectacular, when you, when you look at what's happened here, it's pretty spectacular. And, you know, um, it's, it makes you proud to see you live in Oskaloosa, it really does.
It is, we have a lot going on and this is, yeah, this is just a snapshot in time. Uh, but we have a lot underway. Um, my goal here is to always present the tie to the vision and the goal. So you'll see the annual report presented in a different format, so.
Well, I mean, the non-sexy pieces, I think are, and what I mean by that is the Office 365 and the updates of the police software and the, the things that bring us into the 21st century, operationally, I think are things that, uh, you know, you don't, you don't see it, so it's not that pretty, right? But it sure makes things operate a whole lot more efficiently in the background, so, so those are nice to see.
Yep, and it is, it's the sort of thing where a guy might consider running for reelection, just to be part of the team next time.
We have, we have new ideas, so.
I don't even know when you're supposed to have it done by, when are you supposed to know this day?
September 21st, okay, I wanted to know that, so.
There's no way I could get 10 signatures in two days, so.
I have my signature right here.
I have a possible two people who could replace it.
But I think, Steve, you had mentioned it earlier when, when Amal was going through vibrant community and such. And, and, I mean, you hit it on the head, it's the partnerships and, and the collaboration that's happening.
Yeah, we don't talk about the county and stuff in here.
We have not seen the level of partnership and collaboration in the community in, I don't know how long.
I agree.
And it is extremely encouraging and, I mean, you just go through the trolley stop and great places. I mean, that takes multiple entities, public and private, and, and a lot of volunteers to work through that. And, uh, the facade project, you had Main Street in, in, into that.
And all those businesses that have to sign up and invest in it as well, right? So yeah, I mean, they have skin in the game.
Yep. And, and you think about the Greater Des Moines Partnership and I think, uh, on, on a community level, maybe there was some skepticism in that when we, when we first agreed to, to join and why, why Des Moines and, you know, it's so far away. But, uh, uh, what I've been impressed with lately is, is just the, the, the groundbreaking we've had at Cloud, the entertainment venue and Musco's groundbreaking. Stacy Lowan from Greater Des Moines Partnership, or, or someone from Greater Des Moines Partnership has been at all three physically here to support. So I think that alone, uh, there's, there's that attention, they promote our community on social media. And, and resources. And, uh, you know, I, I told Chief last week with the EMT certification, he didn't just go rogue on us, he was in communication with, with MHP, with Mahaska Health from the start, that we're going to do this together so that we can, we can tag on. Look at the certified site in Southeast Connector, so many partnerships there and, uh, talk about setting the bar high. Um, Steve, we've already got a pretty good start on 24 with, with Cloud's groundbreaking, entertainment venue Musco, the thriving communities designation, which is a designation that was, that, that we got because of a lot of the things on this list that were completed in fiscal year 23 with the comp plan and the housing analysis and those things. So again, congrats to Amal, to Alex, Sean, even Stu, well, no, you didn't, you weren't here in fiscal year 23, so sorry. But Sean and Matt and, and Chief and Chief and Amy and, and the whole staff. I, the other thing I will say, and then I'll shut up.
I know, this guy.
I have received so many positive comments about our city staff, okay? That has not always been the case. So I just want to say congratulations to you guys, to, to the whole team. Because you know that you don't always get that kind of praise, but, uh, there's, there's been a lot of that lately. Just want to make sure you guys know that.
I mean, if I was on the city staff in Oskaloosa, I, I, I don't know how, how, how I could be any more proud, I'm serious. I mean, you folks should be spectacularly proud of what's happened here and, and the way, I, I don't know how else to say it, I mean, our community looks pretty darn good out there. So from, from the bottom of my heart, I just want to say thank you because it makes a difference, so appreciate it.
I want to add something for, for Sean. I know that sewer project from A, coming back my way towards the alley behind North C, you guys had a lot of challenges there. I saw a lot of these contraption things you put on the ground.
Lot more manhole covers.
So, but I was watching that whole project, um, there was a lot of, uh, challenges there, I could see. And that you've done it, got it cleaned up, uh, properties look good, other than the grass needs to come back, but it looks all, it looks really good. So, good.
And the park's coming along, I was driving by there yesterday, the, the Edinson Park is really coming along really well.
By the question, I saw the post on not, not playing on playground equipment, when is the park supposed, is there kind of an ETA of?
End of September.
End of September?
Ten days.
Okay, all right, that's cool, all right, yeah, just didn't know.
They're working on the rocket slide.
Yeah, yeah.
That's obvious.
It's wider today.
It does not save yet.
I caught, it was before.
Yeah, there you go.
I would like to piggyback off the comments, everybody said, you know, we should be proud of the staff that we have. Um, we are really growing this community and it's because of all the hard work everybody is putting in and the teamwork you are doing. Nobody's in it for themselves, we are in it together and thank you for that.
Did you have a comment, Lisa?
Yeah, I had a couple, uh, comments. I thought, um, yesterday Sunday's Register, there was an article, front page of the opinion about how we've lost our voice in so much state government and the, uh, the loss of so many boards and that. So I wanted to say what I saw here were so many voices coming from the community about how we should do things. So you're not swelching the voices, but actually encouraging that. And sadly, we're not seeing that at the state level, uh, in that. And, and nobody's talking about it, and that was the article. Um, I wanted to say, classic small town, from my front porch, I can see the police officers watch as a funeral procession goes by. I can see Homeland Security going by, I saw them grading a road. Uh, and then I saw the fire trucks, which I still haven't had a ride on yet, but I saw two fire trucks go by and that. So I could just, you know, from my front porch, it was classic small town, uh, working. So I very much, uh, very much appreciated that, so. Anyway, so good work and I'm so glad to see, uh, with the Parks and Rec, okay? Uh, I want to see some Leslie Knope out of you.
Okay, other comments? Okay, gets us to the end of our agenda. Um, reports from city staff, city manager, anything else?
Nothing, your, uh, thank you.
City clerk?
Master, thank you.
Okay, city attorney, anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Is she our new city attorney or your substitute? I think we didn't explain.
For the firm.
Okay.
I'm going in for David's side, he's on vacation and he asked if I could sit in for him, so thank you for your graciousness there.
Yep, council members, Lisa?
Yes, I wanted to say, um, I wanted to, uh, say how important new starts are and for my family and, and colleagues and that. I started a new job last, uh, week, I'm going to be working for Indian Hills, uh, Community College. I've worked for two other community colleges, so that is near and dear to my heart. There is no better use of taxpayer money than community colleges, so don't get me started. But I'm going to be doing HISCET, which is a new acronym for what used to be GED. And that's, it's High School Equivalency Test. And so I'll be working with Oskaloosa, New Sharon, Whatcheer, Sagurni and that. So if you know anybody who wants to do that, I'll be doing that. My daughter, my middle daughter, uh, who is disabled, has been living with me, which has not been easy. We have been working on government housing here in Oskaloosa since February. And she finally at 5:03 got the text on Friday, uh, that she gets a new start. And so she moved into Oskaloosa Park, which probably has the best view of apartments in Oskaloosa because you can see the park there and seeing that. Because she's disabled, she's able to move into a retirement community. So I don't have to, I don't think about the wild cardies going on. So I don't have to, I don't think about the wild parties going on at the apartment complex. And then I had to explain to Charlie, who's doing some very positive new starts. I kept driving by his house and I didn't want him to think I was stalking him. Now I was moving my daughter's stuff and we stopped. And he was very helpful in getting her a new start with some garage sale items and gave the money directly to his daughter. So that's how the next 25 years are going to go, Charlie. But it's nice to have new starts. And I did want to add about the library. Every time we moved to a new town, and we moved a lot when I was a kid. I went to five different schools by the time I was in fifth grade. So but the first thing my mom would do is you'd find the grocery store in town and then you'd find the library. And I can't say how pleased I am with how strong our library is. I have known of this library for over 20 years. I came here and gave a history talk and that. And when so many communities' libraries are threatened and they're losing them, you don't realize what a source that is. And I had so many community college students over the years who I would say, have you been to the library? You got a library card. They're like, well, how much does it cost? And they didn't realize, like, that's your start. So libraries can be a new start too for everyone. So there's my little new start talk.
No. Steve, if you need help getting signatures, let me know.
I'm good, Charlie, thanks.
I have two items. Today was the first day for Angela Foster as the Main Street Director. So we're super excited to have a director. And then there is going to be a change to the lighted Christmas parade route. So be on the lookout for that. We want to make sure the community knows that that change is coming. And we'll put notification out probably shortly on that.
That I hear was going to start Beacon and Inn and University Park?
Are you going to plan that?
It's a great story to start.
Way to go, Steve. Way to go.
Might as well get it started, right?
Maybe not quite that long.
Give the chief something to do that night, so.
No, sir, thank you.
Dave and I stood on the landfill board and the cell, the new cell is, should be finished here directly in another week or so when the pumps are in. So it's been a, they actually are encouraging people, if you want to come out and see the landfill, you can see it, but it's been a very hard work and it's going to be very nice for landfill.
Excellent engineering. Yep. If you want to know what a fluffy layer is, there's an opportunity.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Stuff you learn by volunteering for boards and commissions. First of all, the chief and I had a brief conversation this morning that apparently in social media, there was a person who drew an equivalence between a red light and a stop sign.
Red light?
Yes, in their humble opinion, you can stop at a red light and if nobody's coming, go on straight through. 'Tis not be the case. So my understanding is that there's some efforts being made to correct that misinformation out there. And thank you for the efforts of the chief on that. What got me into City Hall was I was actually waiting for a meeting with the Des Moines Partnership in which we spent the better part of an hour talking back and forth and talking with the new CEO there about what are the things that are going on in Oskaloosa. And to some degree, thanking them for their efforts. But they, on the other hand, saying, can you tell us more about what your efforts are? How are you doing so well so fast? And so it's been a very important partnership, more important than I realized at the time that we were signing up for that. I thought it was one more arrow in the quiver. It's way more than that. It's the weapon of choice. And so I see good things happening that way. So anyway, with that, we got nothing else. Does anybody want to move adjournment?
To move.
On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
That was fast. We're adjourned.